Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Fort Isabelle, Texas, on the 10th day of April 2019, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the office of the District on April 4th, 2019, at 2:40 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. Absent at this time, we have Jason Stark and Dr. Adam Lalanne. If we may please proceed to Item 2, invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestow on us on a daily basis. We ask that you continue to guide us and keep us on the path that will help us to improve the business of the water. Lord, thank you for bringing us together again to help us reach this goal, so that we can continue to enhance the quality of life for our colleagues. We ask that you continue to provide us with the understanding and the immunity that we can accomplish so much more. In Jesus' name we pray.
For the record, we do have Dr. Adam Lalanne and Jason Stark joining the meeting. We have a full board present at the time. If we may please proceed to Item 3, invitation to the audience for public comments. Staff, board, anyone like to talk about anything?
Say we had a great conference and learned a few things. I learned a few things, I should say, about public information, which I think are going to be very vital going forward. Hopefully, we can, sometime in the future, improve some of those, some of those things that, that we've learned to help us along with public perception, just trying to get our, trying to get money is what we ask for, basically. But, but no, I think it was a great conference. I really liked the exhibits, I liked the sessions, the breakout sessions, and I want to thank Freeze and Nichols for their participation in the event, big supporters of the event. Thank you.
I concur and look forward to making some things come to fruition, projects and ideas and new things. That's what, that's what we go to learn, that's what we bring back. Anyone else like to add anything?
No, it was a good meeting. I, I appreciated the breakouts that related to Hurricane Harvey, and especially appreciate Charles and Mr. Gomez being with me as we go through the exhibit hall. That, that added a new dimension to what I was looking at. Thank you.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
Great, thank you, looking forward. Let's move along to Item Number 4, considering and discuss for possible approval, the minutes of the regular meeting of March 27th, 2019. Someone had a chance to read them.
Yep. I'm looking to approve.
I'll say.
Motion made by Mr. Avalo, seconded by Mr. Stark. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Great. Motion, or motion to approve. Moving on to Item Number 5, General Manager's Report, Superior Public Water System Recognition Program Review.
As we are the chairman and members of the board that take part in this program, we often see that Texas Department of Energy has awarded the district with superior water supply. And we talked about it a few months back, that the water district was recognized as a superior water treatment plant for public water supply here. We had signs up in Highway 100 and Highway 148. As you come in, it tells you superior water quality, telling our drivers, customers that come in, that the water quality is good. So, that kind of stacks us up on the other information that we provide to residents here. I think I probably put it on the paper and then on the workshop too. But recognizing this, we're going to get a couple of new signs, because I think when they go to highways, they took some, they're not very, so.
We earned our badge back.
New signs, as you look back.
We earned our badge back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And be sure to get this to the press.
Moving on to Item 6, Director of Operations Report.
As you can see on the monthly report, the total number of call-outs, service calls before the month of March, in comparison with last year, there wasn't much difference. It's 337 in 2018, we had 322 for this past March. That was on the distribution side. On the selection side, there were 80 service calls, call-outs for last year, and this year we have 55. They're all pretty much the same. There have been some changes on some of these call-outs due to reclassification on some of them, like in water loss. Last year, we noted quite a few that had water loss. This year, they're being classified as something else, so that's why the difference there. But overall, they're pretty much the same. Moving on to the AMI installation update. At this point, overall, we're at about 60% complete. Out of 6,779 meters, we've already installed 4,041 meters. At Laguna Vista, we have a total of 2,500 meters that we have contracted for servicing. Our, our guys have been installing these meters. We've already installed 1,638. We have 914 to do. In Fort Isabelle, we had 1,669 meters, and we've installed 304 meters at this point. So, for Laguna Vista, we're at 64% complete, and Fort Isabelle, we're 18% complete. And we had kind of stopped, we were trying to finish up Laguna Vista before we went into Fort Isabelle, but because of the rain, a lot of our meters in Laguna Vista are in alleys and so far, and it just got real muddy at the moment, so we went, we started here in Fort Isabelle. We hope to finish up the area where we're at in Fort Isabelle this week, and we'll go back to Laguna Vista to try and close up. The ones at the Gulf Boulevard, those have already all been installed, those are complete. The ones at South Hydrate, we have about 459 to do.
How many total meters on that?
On the island, 2,558.
You said 6,790, total system-wide, commercial, residential, total, commercial, residential, everything? Total meters connected.
That's 5/8, 1-inch, 2-inch, 4/6, 8/8. And so, what we've installed there is 2,099. Again, I think I reported this the last time, PMI, the contracting company that we asked to do the installation at South Hydrate, for some reason, they left, and they only left one guy here, so we're communicating with services and the company so that they can bring somebody else back to try and finish up these 459 meters that need to be installed. Quite a few, about half of these are 2-inch and above. 5/8 are pretty much completed.
What's the timeframe to hopefully have everything done?
By mid-July, we're pretty much on schedule at this point, even though we've had quite a bit of rain that has interrupted, but we're still pretty much on schedule. So, we're looking to try and complete this. Just recently, we had a conversation with, Joelle and I had a conversation with the director from East Rio Honda Water Supply, and they had a little over 1,000 meters, and it took a fair amount of time.
Ouch.
On the other item, I'll say the manhole, which is recently replaced, manhole on Red Snapper and Gulf Boulevard, that was one of the others, the three that I reported to you the last time. We still have one on Constellation and the one in Retama. One in Retama is not too bad, that's about nine, 10 feet deep. But the one on Constellation is 18 to 20 feet deep, and has a couple of laddles that go in there, so that's going to be a really tricky one. We have a concern there, because our men have to go down there and figure out where to cut so that we can put the laddles that are coming in on the inlet that we're going to put in. So, on that one, we may try and get an estimate to see what the cost will come out to as far as having a contractor because of the depth, and because for that one, we will have to rent quite a bit of equipment if we try and do it ourselves, and to start off with the excavator, which it costs is about $8,000. Then we have to get the boxes to make sure that we don't have any kind of mast light, and those will run about, I think it was four or $600?
Was it $4,000?
4,000, I'm sorry. 4,000, so it may just be better to get the contractor to take care of that one.
Can you refresh, if I have memory, why we're doing that one?
Because there's water going in.
Okay.
And we're afraid that at some point, it's going to collapse, and because of the depth, it can create a real hazard.
Michigan, Mr. Gomez, is that the one that you shared pictures with us two meetings ago?
That was one of them. That was the one on Atto and Laguna Boulevard.
But this one has even greater compromises than that one, so, okay, I understand.
Yes, sir. The one on Atto was about 13, 14 feet, and our excavator was able to get down pretty much to it. But the one on Constellation, that one's about 18 to 20 feet, but it's going to require a bigger excavator than we currently have, so in doing that, we would have to rent one, which has costed about $8,000 for a couple of weeks.
Safety first.
Sounds like we should get a quote.
Yes, sir. And that's what we're going to do, we're going to try and get, see if we can get a couple of quotes, and, well, two or three of them. We know of one other company that, that does that type of work, that's what we're looking at. On the current one that we, the one that we just finished, that one, the manhole inlet was $2,000, $2,038. We had to get a cement pumper, because we put cement in between the inlet and the original manhole, and that one cost us $450. And then the cement cost was around $800. We're still waiting for the patch work, they've already done the work. I don't know what the cost is on that. I'm going to estimate about $5,000 based on what they charges for the last inch at Toad and looking at that. So, the total cost on that could be around a little over $8,000, which is still significantly less than what the contractor was charging, at least based on the estimates that he gave us for the last, about $25,000.
Good work.
We still have questions, ladies. Any questions?
No, we're good.
What do you think will have the work done?
The one on Constellation?
Well, the big one especially.
That one, we're looking to see, maybe looking at a couple of weeks, in a couple of weeks, provided we have good weather.
But hopefully get all that stuff done before Memorial Day?
Yes.
Before the summer season.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you.
Item 7, District Engineers Report.
Yeah, the only item I have on here is the bond election stacks, and it's pretty much the same schedule from last time. The only update is the fact that we had that workshop on April 1st, that was pretty effective. And then we have that task authorization request here as the next board item for April 10. And then we're also meeting on Monday, the 15th, with the financial advisor and bond council. And so, we'll start to dive into details, which, I don't know how much of that we want to discuss now, or we'll just wait till?
We're meeting and trying to find out the, what, I think they did a lot of information from, from the company, how they tend to work, you know, as of mid-year. But yeah, there's more information that's needed for them to assess the way to tackle it down.
Our next board meeting is the 24th, is that correct?
Yes.
So, the action required on Monday, the 19th, is that it require our involvement at all?
August 19th?
Ah, thank you.
August 19th?
Never mind, I thought it was April 19th.
Yeah, no, the items that, that were the milestones, that are worth for the, that they need to go off, that's going to be, that's when the, 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 the proposition.
I understand. I misread August and thought it was April. I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, that concludes, unless there's other questions.
Have we obligated ourselves to a particular financial advisory?
Um, no, I mean, it's, well, oh, that's true, we're under contract.
Or how long, what's that period of time?
Two more years.
Yeah, our standard policy is three years, it was signed in 2018.
Okay, thank you, Charles. Moving on to Item Number 8, considering and discuss for possible approval, task authorization Freeze and Nichols Inc. to prepare engineers' reports to support proposed propositions for 2019 bond.
All right, yeah, and I have, Charles, could you, he attended the, we handed it over to him to explain the task that are behind the district's proposal.
Sounds good. Good afternoon. We provided the proposal to help with the bond. We've got the four projects that we discussed at the last bond workshop. We've got the water plant number one assessment, the evaluation of the two elevated storage tanks. What accompanies that is also taking a water model, updating it, getting it calibrated, so we can evaluate where to put these tanks, what size they need to be. Y'all looking to invest two, $3 million if you're looking at replacing these tanks, so we want to make sure that we're putting them in the right place, and they're the right size, we don't want to do it one time. Once they're in there, it's difficult to change, we think. So, we do have updating that water model, and I know Charles has some 2-inch water lines, it's not, not in this scope, but we already talked about up and out, looking at evaluating some 2-inch water lines.
Yeah, they've got some of the different sizes.
That wasn't included in here, but we worked when we do the, updating the model, water model. We have the preliminary engineering services for the, the gravity main on SA 100, Lift Station 25. We do want to be clear that this task, this scope doesn't actually include any engineering. Y'all already got that engineering as part of that previous proposal that we provided, so I looked it up, Charles. We, we included six hours of effort to take whatever report that is produced in that other one, and apply it to the bond, whatever changes we have to make, whatever we have to add to the report to incorporate that work into the bond program. So, it's not actually any type of significant effort or reengineering or anything.
Yeah, that was a question I had, that was a question I had, because when I saw that, I said, well, you know, we already are doing engineering from, because of the emergency status of Lift Station 25, I was under the assumption that we'd already taken care of that, but you're saying we're not getting any engineering on, on that, on that third bullet point?
Yeah.
On the gravity main?
You're already paying for that, we're already producing.
From the other expenditure we made from the last.
Right, you're writing the estimates on the part of that other one, so it's purely administration administrative to bring it into this report and apply it to the bond.
And my understanding is you're going to assess that, that particular gravity main or lift station. Basically, what you're doing is assessing that whole system, the, the line coming in, the lift station itself, and the pumps, is that correct?
Right, right. So, we're rehabilitating Lift Station 25, we're cleaning, and we're going to do an assessment on the force mains, but they're going to come out and meet with the district on that meeting, and we already scheduled it for the.
Yeah, April 29th, that week is the actual cleaning?
Yeah, exactly, cleaning and assessment. So, we're in the process of getting that scheduled.
And that's going to give us an idea of just how much work is going to be needed to rebuild or rehab that whole, that whole area?
Well, the question is, there's. Yeah, I think we have three force mains as part of that assessment.
Okay. Yeah, and then the previous authorization, it was going to be highest three, second three, lift station, and then this other one's going to cover more, Lift Stations going to be a part of it, but that's part of the force main assessment, that's in this segment.
Right. Yeah, I just want to be clear that we're not, we're not double charging you for engineering.
Yes, thank you for that.
It's already done, we just incorporated. So, real minor item there. Then we also have the, the seven lift stations that were not included for the, for our bone board funds, Lift Station 25, to bring them into this project here. In this one, we did include the, the cleaning of the force mains and the evaluation of the force mains in the preliminary engineering, whereas now we're kind of doing it as part of our bone board program now. But when we go for the bond, your force mains are 50% of your hydraulic system, you've got your pumps, and you've got your lift stations, you can rehab those, but we want to know ahead of time if we have a problem with the force mains, if we need to make repairs, we want to include that in the bond program. So, that's why we're standing on that and assessing it now. And obviously, any cleaning that you do, it has to improve your hydraulically and help with engineering savings too, so it's more of, it helps with maintenance as well.
And, and my other question earlier was in regards to those seven additional lift stations, I wanted to make sure that the improvements we're doing there are actually a benefit to getting Plant Number One up and running.
That, I mean, I mean, as far as, I think those lift stations are completely separate.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to assess, and, because I think part of the reason we're moving forward with this is to get Plant Number One up and running, and my question to our engineer was, are all these bullet points going to contribute to that? I mean, I understand, you know, wanting to fix all of them, but I just want to make sure that that is, it is part of the process of trying to get Plant Number One up and running.
Well, because there was, as far as that Monday workshop, Water Plant One was one item, and then there was additional projects.
See, and I missed, that's all.
Yeah, we talked about that in the workshop.
The boiler stations, the elevated storage tanks, and so we're going to, we're proposing the water model update to size our tanks correctly on the water system. And then wastewater will be, will be doing.
There's seven lift.
Water plant is water treatment, and then the lift station will be wastewater, so they'd be, they'd be separate. But yes, we would evaluate Water Plant Number One, make recommendations on what needs to be improved to bring it up to the water quality standards of Water Plant Number Two, and make the recommendations part of this.
But there's seven lift stations that are separate that we discussed in our workshop, correct?
Those are where the kind of future debt in our, in our capital plan.
I'm hoping you understand, because I heard something that contributes, the water treatment plant is not contributing to the lift station repair, it's only two separate projects.
Right. So, we're doing these additional seven lift stations because?
Well, we plan to bring the GO, the tax bond, so it doesn't impact our revenues, because that was actually the capital plan and the right study for our five-year, you know, set of increases. But if that ends up going to the, to the tax bond, it's not going to be affecting our revenue.
Yeah.
Were there any other questions on, on the scope and what services that we're providing?
I did read something about, and I'm trying to find it now where it was, about attending some, some meetings with, I guess with the leadership in the area to, you know, educate them about what it is that we're doing.
Right. Yeah, we included, I think, I think five visits, just so we can visit stakeholders with y'all, you mentioned the Charles Vincent council meetings, and things like that, when y'all bring that bond forward, just that we're there to help y'all represent the bond.
I think a good, and this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking for the board at all, but I think it would be good to address the mayors of the city, because they could be our catalyst for moving that bond forward. That's just a suggestion.
Typically, we go to council meeting, and three council meetings, and usually some other public outreach or something, Rotary or something, and there would, you know, some sort of another large civic function or something, usually it's five easily, and then staff usually can, you know, do the other five. I mean, there's a lot of, any meeting, any public hold meeting is, school board is always one, councils are always one, and, you know, and we can, once, you know, on the end, we can get the, towards the end, we always kind of get our own.
Big party at the Cannonball or something like that.
Correct. We always kind of, always get our, actually, you know, once we know fully and we're able to, our training wheels are off to handle the meetings, some on our own, and move forward.
Yeah. And I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that's great as well.
Yeah.
Solid. Is there any action required on this?
Yes.
All right, then.
My only question for our, our finance guys is, is this a good price? Who's evaluating that? Because I have no experience with evaluating whether this is a good deal or not a good deal.
Yeah, who's going to stand up and answer that question?
Way of evaluating the value, you know, the value of an engineer, I don't know.
You want to speak to that?
Yeah.
You want to defend your cost?
I mean, or just an explanation of it, I guess.
You're on YouTube now, so.
That's fine, that's fine. So, the way Freeze Nichols develops our fees, obviously, there's, there's percentages of construction and things like that that sometimes engineers use. The way that Freeze Nichols uses it, it develops our fees, is we actually, every task that we have to do, we detail it out, and we assign who's going to work on it, and how many hours we think it's going to take to get it done. So, it's not like a number that we just kind of throw out at you and see if it sticks, it's, it's very detailed, very specific on what we think it's going to take to do it down to the hour, and that's how we develop our, our fees. You know, from, from an overall standpoint, you know, $112,000 of that, of that fee is, or, you know, roughly a fourth, a little over a fourth of it is just doing the force main assessment, that's just a subcontract cost, bringing the ACE in to clean and evaluate your force mains, which is partially maintenance, that's going to benefit you for years to come, spending those force mains. So, that has nothing really to do, the fourth of this fee has nothing to do with what we're doing. So, and one thing that probably was, was not anticipated, was the water model, and that was right at $45,000 to update that water model, get it calibrated, and that's a $45,000 investment to make sure we don't make a $3 million mistake.
Yeah, that was for the purpose of the tanks.
Right. And plus, that, once you have it calibrated, like we said, we know Charles with the small lines, which they were, the pressureages you are, it's already calibrated, ready to go. So, again, that's an investment in what's.
Right. And that estate's going to reflect the water line we did on both boulevards, and once we get here on Barita, how we have that 6-inch main on, on the power grid, so those are all improvements that we need to incorporate into this model, correct?
And then from a, I mean, from a, from an ethical and just the way that Freeze Nichols approaches our clients, is that we've always, I was told this by Mike Nichols when I was hired in 2005, is that Freeze Nichols doesn't chase projects, we develop relationships, and we look for mutually beneficial relationships. We're not here to make as much as we can and skip town, we're here to earn the next project, and so that's the way we, we approach our fees and our clients. So, for what we're providing, I think it's fair, I went through, in my last pass, I think I cut close to $20,000 worth of effort in my last review before I sent it to Charles. Charles and I worked together, looked for efficiencies, we talked about, you know, the, the workshops that we're going to have, is that we, I'll be here in person, because we think face-to-face meetings is very important, but video conferencing in, a lot of the engineers that we can bring in, we can put them on video conference as a cost-saving initiative, so between Charles and I, we did go through it and try to make it more efficient on our part. So, we do feel that it's, it's fair for what we're providing.
Right, and also with the, with the fee being built on that estimate, I mean, there'll be kind of sheets that can see how close it is, or, you know, so there'll be a way to track, you always assume they're actually approved.
Yeah. So, you're, you're asking.
And if I may speak for this as well, I mean, Alex and I have committed and spent some considerable time with none of the show members, none of the Freeze Nichols, they made the shortlist because of their qualifications and their experience in this, in this field. And then when we interviewed that shortlist, in my opinion, I'm not speaking for Alex or the other members of that board, they were far above, beyond anything I witnessed that day with their attention to detail, and just a few days that they had the $150,000 engineering plan that we gave you, and you had already picked out some ways that we could save money in approaching that. and you had already picked out some ways that we could save money in approaching that project. And I was really impressed, you know, with your attention to savings and creating a relationship and not looking at this as a one-shot opportunity. I haven't been here long, but from rumblings, you know, with previous companies, you know, we'll give you an opportunity. But if you fall short on that opportunity, we'll look elsewhere, you know? And, and they've already done that and I commend our district for doing that. But that being said, you know, I'll stand by my recommendation for your company and what you represent. And I'm excited moving forward to see what you can do for us, not only this project, but hopefully projects to come.
Appreciate that. And like I said, we're here to earn, earn the next one. I think there was a statistic came out in the company that 97% of our work comes from previous clients. So if you work with us, there's a really good chance you're going to work with us again. I correlate that last 3% for growth as new clients, just.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're, we're very proud of that. That's a 10-year average. It's not like the last month, over 97%, no, it's 10-year average. We're very proud of that.
So with all this in mind, no one else has anything else to say? I'm not sure if Houston wants to weigh in or anything. I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey for approval.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos. For all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Welcome aboard. That's a big, big, big new team member.
Yes.
I've got a comment.
Yes?
I've, I've got a comment on, just, just as a, as a side note or FYID. One of the things I noticed at the conference was lots of, for whatever reason, it just stood out, lots of different ceramics for substrates for the, these elevated storage tanks. What, what do you think about those? Just out of curiosity.
Ceramics.
Yeah, these ceramic tiles they have now?
Yeah, there was one there after they had.
It's, it's like, it's some kind of metal.
Glass fused?
Glass fused, yes.
Right.
I mean, obviously, they're like three times more expensive than, than, I mean, they're much more expensive than traditional ones. But, but they seem to have, I don't know, I mean, they just seem like a really great ideal thing. Just curious what your take on them is.
I've seen them used predominantly for ground storage tanks. A lot of developers type, you know, use them. I haven't used them for, I haven't seen them for elevators, but I have seen data. Did you see one for an elevator?
Yeah, no, they actually had a picture of one that they built somewhere as an elevated tank. And on top of it, it has a water plant underneath on the base.
Right. Yeah, it's probably, it's probably at North, maybe in Canada or somewhere.
Who knows?
That sounds cheap.
So when you look at bolted steel tanks, especially the glass fuse.
Well, that's going to be a water plant, and we're going to really get that.
Right. So the glass fuse, you think of a flat plate. But that glass fuse lining on, the glass fuse lining is fantastic, phenomenal, it's great. But it's still a bolted tank. And so you have rubber gaskets that are still going to age.
Right.
It's still flex. And then on the inside, usually the, the raptor supports are galvanized steel. So usually below your water level, it's, 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 usually it's going to break your space. Your structural steel, you have edges and structural shapes that are going to corrode, not easy to corrode. So it's kind of like, the structural steel is low end, where it's going to corrode most. And that part of your steel, you can see a lot of corrosion. It says the best lining. So when you try to rehabilitate your tank, the gasket's also going to be wrong because you don't choose the right tubing. You're going to do it, because they flex, they crack. A lot of times it can be like galvanized steel. Steel's actually so thin, they're going to break it too. Erase it, blast it, radio it. If it corrodes on the inside, it's going to soon be. It can be done, they do. I wouldn't recommend it.
Okay.
Just my point of view.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thing I'd like to say on rubber inside water, you think of the flappers on the toilets. They always tend to dissolve.
Yeah.
That's what will happen with the chlorine inside the tanks.
Yeah, the chlorine does not.
Not too good.
Okay.
If you're looking for as cheap as possible on, you know, the ground storage tank, you only need it in service for a few years, then, then sometimes we'll go that way, but it's pretty good. We usually see it for like developers.
What about our contracts we have with, that are on those tanks themselves? Do we have to modify them or not? Or ACD or whoever drives them.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we're even have a little bit of locating source of print, I mean, we'll have to coordinate whatever.
We probably need to also pull those contracts out and look at those or whatever our obligations are to modify and all that stuff.
Well, one thing that came up is they're requesting the well in our tank in the East End, which, I mean, if the well limits not out, there's going to be a lot of damage outside.
So we need to review those because those are, those have a lot of strings attached to it.
Right, well, in design, we can have, you know, part of the tank prep or, you know, like that attachments. And have the ability that way to know when to have it. I mean, that can be from the design.
Right, so we usually, if we're designing, we're working with southern companies, we'll, we'll have a meeting with them and we'll specifically get the, get their requirements, actually work them upfront.
Okay.
Of how to weld the attachments and things like that, so they're not coming back damaging.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, we need to work, remember to work with them too, so.
Yeah, sizing antennas, weights, things like that.
Okay.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Move along to item number nine, Director of Finance report.
So we're, we're trying to get the financing for the, it's the $5.4 million that we're borrowing from the Texas Water Development in the form of a revenue bond. And to get the best interest rate possible, we decided to go ahead and get a rating from our, from Moody's Rating Agency. It's the first time we've had a rating for our revenue. We've been rated for our property tax, the general obligation bonds, but we haven't had ratings for, for our revenue. And so this report is, is very valuable. It comes from an independent rating agency who looks at us from the perspective of similar organizations. So it would look at all the water and utilities of a similar size and see how we compare. And this is the grade that they gave us. So the, the grade, the grade that they gave us was an A1 rating, which is very good. If you, if I can just read you the, the summary of how they evaluated us. It says, "Gunnamadra Water District's water and wastewater system is solid, supported by a history of strong financial performance and healthy reserves. The district recently adopted a five-year rate plan and should enable the district to maintain strong debt service coverage levels. And a separate emergency fund will ensure the district maintains healthy liquidity. The district's credit profile is limited, though, by the modestly sized scope of operations, moderate customer concentration, reflecting the significant role of the tourism industry and below-average income levels for permanent residents. Additionally, the credit is charged by high exposure to environmental risks such as hurricanes and drought, as well as consumption fluctuations due to weather patterns. Positively looked though, the district has adopted a disaster and recovery plan to ensure continued service delivery in the case of weather and continues to evaluate opportunities to increase water supply." So in March 2020, we assigned an additional A1 rating to the district's rate. So this, the importance of this report is an independent opinion of our system rated on a wide variety of factors. And this will allow us to get a better interest rate, but without, without a rating. So we expect on the next meeting, we'll have a presentation from our financial advisor and let us know what's upcoming for us. Also in your packet, there's this A1, which tells you a little bit about what an A1 rating is and how that is compared to other ratings. Continue with the, the piece of the insurance. At the regular board meeting on February 13th of 2019, emergency repairs were approved of the master control panel at the Isla Blanco water treatment plant blowers. We filed a claim with our insurance company, but that claim was denied by our property insurance. They concluded because water did not enter the building through a storm created opening, there is no coverage for the interior water damage. After the repairs were completed, it became apparent that high winds and winter rain were the cause of the loss. The blower room does not have air conditioning, the majority of the wall contains louvers for air exchange. We believe that strong winds blew water into the building, resulting in the damage of the master control panel. We saw water inside the blowers as well, which is on the other end of the conduit and where the water entered the control panel. So the path of the water damage was in from the high rain, from the high winds and rain blew the louvers into the blower, to the electric conduit and into the master control panel. So we were unable to file a windstorm claim because unnamed storms have a $25,000 deductible and the damages to the system are $14,000 to a change. There are waiting potential modifications that we can make to mitigate the losses.
That was the second time I have to talk to you.
No, it's the first.
The first.
We need to remember that in our insurance renewal, though. That's, that is a lesson learned. I don't know if we, not now, but we need in our insurance renewals, though. We need to, we learn from these lessons.
Just a comment.
Yes.
Okay. What? Yeah, so we can continue to, I'm in a, I'm in a.
Yes.
Can I ask our council, do you think that that's, that's an arguable point? That that's worth doing anything with? Or should, or do we have to bite the bullet on this? I mean, the phrase, yeah, the phrase "storm created opening."
Well, even if they covered it, we would still have the $25,000 deductible. And it only costs $15,000 to pick it up, so.
But that's for the, that's for the windstorm. What's our deductible with just the property insurance?
Well, they'd only, they'd only pay it if it's windstorm. That's the only thing that we're covering, correct?
They, they didn't find any opening, according to the inspector that came by. They couldn't find any opening that, that happened outside.
The, the insurance says it's not a windstorm.
Right.
So we're not, so we're not covering anything, no matter what. If we win our fight, and it was a windstorm, we go, okay.
I thought it's, I thought it's, the property was saying one thing and then secondarily, we could have tried to submit it to windstorm.
A true property insurance.
Right.
Yes, because it's too different.
That's a, that's a. Windstorm covers water that is blown into it because of a storm. So I get that, we can't do anything with that.
Are we covered for the condensation? Just for, I thought that we were not.
No, they, they, they thought that it was condensation that, that covered it and.
So the property would pay for it if the storm created, if damage was done because of the storm and then water came in, that would be covered by the property.
And what, and what would the deductible be on that?
For the property insurance?
It's significantly less than what we have.
So then my, yeah, so because of my question would be, is, is there an opening right now for water to go in? Like, if I went over there with a squirt gun, could I squirt water? And if the answer's no, then did the storm not create the opening for water to get in?
My understanding is our, it's our opinion that the storm did.
It was wind driven.
I also thought that.
The, the wind drew, drove the, the rain through the louvers and into the building, through the blowers and into the conduit.
Or did the wind blow the louvers and then rain just happen to flow in? Which would, I mean, that's the crux of the argument there, right?
We still have enough deductibles.
We have.
He's saying the property insurance.
Probably believe, could I in the ballpark of a thousand, which would. I reviewed the policy that you sent me.
Yeah, and that was the property, was the one that I gave you.
Right, and it said it did not cover condensation, but it only windstorm.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we would have to, I, I, I thought that the deductible applied to that policy. But if it doesn't, and you think we have, we have an argument that it was windstorm.
Here. I mean, ultimately, I think that's what we, what Adam's asking. If you could.
Wait, which one is the deductible applied in policy I reviewed?
It's, no.
Okay.
The deductible that is for the, we have, we have a insurance company for property and flood. And then you have another one that's for, the one that I sent you is for the property, property and flood.
But that's not with the deductible?
The, the.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that.
So my only question would be, if wind.
Look at it again.
If wind damaged the building and then water came in through that opening, that would be under the property.
We need, we probably need a report that said, that backed up our, our hypothesis to decide about.
Because we just had another really windy storm, did anything happen again?
And it all depends what the rest.
Is that because we fixed the building?
No. We have.
We still have conduits, like, like in this, in this one conduit that we. We did, we did, you know, take measures to reduce.
So do we not have a concern then, that because apparently it, it was caused by wind-driven rain, which we get three times a year generally, that if we don't, like, test whatever causes it? I just don't want to get hit with that 15 grand.
Well, when the ceiling, the conduit, I mean, we blocked the path that, if, for whatever reason, we got heavy rain that gets to the roof vents, gets through the louvers, so somehow this is.
It's not being into master.
We sealed that conduit, so it's no longer make its way to the control panel.
Okay.
But I still want to review all this in insurance renewal. We knew we had one on some of these, another new, another new hole.
And I would still just review it one more time. And if you think, you know.
No, I reviewed it and I, and my, my opinion was that.
We have no leg to stand on there.
No, my opinion was we can show that it was wind driven and it's covered. And then it's not covered. And then I would, I guess I misunderstood. I thought it was supposed to be a $25,000 deductible. And I didn't realize that $25,000 applies to some other coverage that I didn't review. Coverage that I reviewed, if we can put together a report and an argument there, maybe $4,000.
Can we?
And another factor in this equipment is the fact that hydrogen sulfide being right next to the floor room, and we have a ring that's sitting right next to that. I mean, there, there's a, there's a gas component to this equipment, getting, you know, having accelerated corrosion on top of just this one isolated ring event. So I mean, there's, there's, like, say these cost covers, or if there's a way we can, you know, drill that over in that raw channel and use it well, then that would be just the amount of hydrogen sulfide.
That's a secondary issue, though, right? What you're saying, you're talking about how to fix it, but we're still talking about how to. I don't know if it's worth a letter saying, hey, we contend it, X.
Yeah, strongly worded letter sometimes you go.
Well, if we have, it would be helpful if we had some data to back it up or some kind of a report or some kind of opinion.
National Weather Association.
Well, not just that there was wind, but, I mean, they, they recognize that there was a windstorm, but they don't think that's.
So could we call the adjuster to come out again and reevaluate?
He'll probably tell you the same thing. You might want to get somebody independently.
Yeah, get somebody on our side.
There, there was, the, the TML hired a local adjuster to go and evaluate.
Which, if they, if they see.
Why are we so convinced that they're wrong? We're convinced they're wrong, we know they're wrong.
After we pulled the equipment, Charles was there when they were repairing.
The back panel, the back panel was, something before him before. And I mean, that's more than just a single water vent, that's going to be the hydrogen sulfide getting there. And, and the same thing with the inlet filters that we replaced. I mean, we, they were installed in 2017, we changed them out just within the past month, and those things were extremely cruel.
Did we have to take any photos? Probably not.
Yeah, there's photos, I just, I mean, we have.
We can show the condition.
Put something together and convince them that this was not just condensation that was caused by, we need something to go, go to them with, to make an argument against the independent report.
Yeah, but you got to find an adjuster that's going to go against a TML adjuster, and you're not going to find that.
Yeah, my, my thought is that, you know, whoever you get, the insurance, property insurance is going to tell you, yeah, you're right, that's wind driven rain, that's to you, and that's what they're going to tell you.
You don't need any, you don't need another adjuster, all you need is, is an argument and a letter, and they, if they give us somebody, great, and if they don't, well, they're like us as much.
Yeah, that's certainly a lot. But if we have, like, photos and we can make an argument, you know, ourselves, and say, look, we know this is, it's this way because of the, you know, it was caused by this.
It was a freak storm, it was just a freak storm.
And it, and it was obviously wind, the wind driven rain that came in, this isn't just condensation, guys, your guy was wrong, he didn't see these things, and we can put something together.
You guys look at it.
Wind driven, information is with a windstorm, right? Insurance? We have a $25,000 deductible? So it's not worth going that route.
No, I was just.
The other one, the other one is the, the property insurance that covers it, they didn't find any broken parts anywhere, so.
Right. So we got to, we got to show.
Yeah, the, the wind driven company is.
Why don't you guys look at it and give back to us? You don't have to decide right now, we don't need to have the discussion in the moment, but if it's worth looking at for 15 minutes, then go from there. That was it, that was my only comment.
Thousand a minute.
Yeah, for 15,000 bucks, sometimes it's worth a letter to see if they'll settle for a third or something. Maybe they won't.
You don't know if you don't try.
The main thing is, Charles, we need to learn from this incident as to prevent a future one.
Yes. I mean, a lot of it's going to be maintaining our filters, making sure they're changed out properly.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Move along to, are we done?
Yes.
Move along to item number 10. Consider and discuss for possible approval of financial reports of February 2019. Comments, questions, anyone want to go through them one by one and acknowledge them? What's our status? Acknowledged by Mr. Avalos, also acknowledged by Mr. Starky, is everyone else acknowledged and accept? Moving along to item number 11. Consider and discuss for possible approval of purchase of a fuel management system.
Chairman members of the board, we need to replace the fuel management system that we currently have. Sometimes works on some. And we have, we have a good service. The company, in Florida, they had to hire a company to come and take a look, and sometimes they can't put it back to work. Also.
So the way it's been a 35 grand on this software would save us money.
Yeah, I was just a little surprised that we didn't get much participated, participation and the difference from the.
The difference?
One of them was looking at replacing the whole system versus just upgrading part of it.
The ones are, and we're recommending the software right. It's simpler. The next one is the. 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 They are transporting the stuff. They are wanting to replace it, having to. They're just stopping. They're the ones that we have, that have nothing. So the commentations from the. It's.
Approved by Mr. Avalos, second. Second by Mr. Houston, all those in favor? Are any opposed? None. Motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item number 12. Consider and discuss for possible approval of roof repairs for the mainsolder.
Does the whole roof in general need to be redone?
The part I mean, it's just a carport.
Just a carport.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, it seems a little excessive.
We don't want the same material, we are asking the same, how good that we can.
Concrete tile?
How many squares? How many squares of roofing?
It's not very big, I mean, it's probably like about a 10 by 20 or something like that.
It's only the, the over, the, the cover for the drive-through.
It is a liability issue. And this is not something our enterprise people can do.
What if you just put a, one of those Mueller roofs on it or something, one of those, standing steam metal roofs on it, as opposed to the tile and all that?
All I'm saying is, you can't have more than four or five squares of tile, and it's easy, concrete tile from system shouldn't be over 300, 300, $500 a square. Somebody has seen you covet and taken advantage of you. And Jason can speak to that. I mean, you can put a metal roof on it, a little bit warm, it's ridiculous.
It's a high number, I don't know the square footage we're talking about, but.
Well, they said like 10 by 20 to 10 by 20, I mean, you're talking four or five squares of roofing. I'd go back for a rebid and do a, look at a metal roof and look at a, a different, couple of different.
I mean, I wouldn't want this job because conflict interest, but I'm telling you right now that for that size, it would be a third of this. I mean, I want, I want the roof to be replaced, I mean, don't get me wrong, I don't want to waste money either.
Now, I, I can get you a guy, but he's not bonded and insured, but he does a hell of work. He does all mine.
When it's under 50, you get $8.
Sure. But all I'm saying is, this, it's just.
It's pricey.
We're not talking about this one building?
At the end of the building.
I saw that number, I was.
So however big the drive-through is.
So we do.
Just a carport, so we're not like, we don't have any leaky offices or wind driven rain, and they're like, you know.
It's a drive-through.
Circuit boards or anything like.
You got one of those tiles falls off on a car or something.
That's our concern, is that the tile's not secure anymore, they're just falling off.
And really, what I would recommend is that you go with a metal roof.
That's what I would say.
You won't ever have to worry about it.
This price.
But the metal is what is on there right now, and that's what the problem is.
What's that?
The metal is what's on there right now, and that's what's, what's falling off.
How old is the roof?
Not even 10 years old.
Huh?
It's a little bit different, it's a little bit different metal, it's not, these are our tiles, not necessarily like the whole panel.
Why don't we table this and move along?
Why don't we just take no action?
Take no action.
Can we come back in two weeks with something?
There you go.
Sorry. It's just real expensive. For that small space.
I'll move the table then.
No, it, it's, no action.
No action?
Item 12, no action. Move along to item 13. Consider and review expenditures from March 16 through the 31st, 2019. So everyone had a chance to review them, questions, comments, anything you want to pull, particular discussed one? Motion to acknowledge them? Okay, acknowledged by Mr. Avalos and Mr. Houston, are all those acknowledging? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Moving along to item 14. We are adjourned at 6:34 PM.